The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Monday, March 11th, 2024 at 6:01 PM. Please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk may have the roll call.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor. Commissioner Otteaway.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hanley.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here. Commissioner Mayor is missing tonight. Could I have a motion to excuse him? Protem Hanley?
I move that we exclude Commissioner—wow, Commissioner Mayor—for personal reasons.
At a second, Commissioner Otteaway.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. We are now going to approve the agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. I have no announcements for this evening, so we will move right along to public comments. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment, and if you wish to make public comment, step up to the podium just in case you are here for the public hearing. Those comments can be taken during the public hearing as you see it on the agenda. So anyone wishing to make public comments?
Two items. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'd like to invite the public from any part of the world that would like to come Wednesday, March 13th, 1:00 PM, Elwood Maston Park, Marquette, Michigan. There will be a short gathering of people to commemorate the four-year anniversary of the start of the pandemic. That date was chosen because that is the date in the local area where the schools were shut, which is when it really became real. The program is short. It is—basically, there'll be a choir, Star Spangled Banner, Ode to Joy, Turn, 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 and it'll finish with taps. The idea is that people will come there and talk about things that the pandemic caused, positive and negative, but that we will not be in such a hurry to move forward with our lives that we forget the challenges we all face together. And as I said, the good news this year is I was able to secure the performance of good singers, so you will not be forced to listen to me sing. But that's Wednesday, March 13th, 1:00 PM, Elwood Maston Park. We're going to meet at the handicap fishing ramp. If there's inclement weather—I've checked and the archway is open—we can move there. We won't be there an hour. There's no big deal coming. I just wanted people to know that we're doing this. Now I'm going to switch gears and not talk about the TIF because I've already talked about it, and let you know that I figured out a way for your Parks and Recreation Department to save between 20% and 60% of the budgeted amount it has for grass and grass cutting this summer. If you would—I'm not being funny about this. I'm taking a class from MSU on inland lakes and how they can be improved by ecosystems, and the worst thing you can do is plant grass next to the lake in any way, shape, or form. It's bad for the soil. It doesn't absorb toxins, and Canada geese love it. And they recommend that anybody who can plant clover in public areas rather than grass. It's better for the soil. Canada geese do not like it because it grows higher and they don't have as much visibility, and it also acts as a filter to stop the toxins from going into it. Plus, in terms of management society, it does not require mowing the same way a lawn does. And it is time for Marquette to get out in the forefront. If you just have your purchasing department cost out grass seed versus clover, you will find that the overall expense for replacing grass this summer could be cut by two-thirds, plus your maintenance costs will be cut as well. And I encourage you to look into this because I saw it on my class and I looked it up, and they're dead right. And plus the fact you'll be using the natural plants to filter out the toxins. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Public comment is now closed. We'll move on to our next adjourned item, which is the public hearing on the Downtown Development Authority TIF plan, tax increment financing plan. And City Clerk, would you provide a background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. For several years, the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, has been considering an expansion of the current tax increment financing district to include the area of North Third Street incorporated into the DDA district in 2011. Demand for expanded services from Third Street business owners along with projected growth along North Third Street has increased the need for the TIF district expansion. In addition to the expansion of the TIF district, this financing plan also extends the life of the current DDA TIF to 2054. Examples of priority projects included in the TIF plan are Third Street Parking Supply Analysis Expansion and Management, Marquette Commons Enhancement Projects, Wayfinding Signage throughout the district, Barriga Avenue Street Improvements, and Third Street Improvements. If approved by the Marquette City Commission and State Taxing Authority, this TIF plan is projected to bring in approximately $51,875,521 for reinvestment in downtown Marquette over 30 years, and will ensure the continued growth and vibrancy of the entire district. Fiscal effect: Future eligible tax revenues will be captured by the Downtown Development Authority for the duration of the plan. Recommendation: Approve the Downtown Development Authority TIF Plan Number Four, waive the development area Citizens Council requirement, direct staff to annually review the DDA TIF collection to determine the viability of revenue sharing, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I will open the public hearing for the Downtown Development Authority TIF plan. Those wishing to speak can please step up to the podium. And you know the weave, name, address.
Jen Tucker, 2206 Presque Isle. Thank you guys for having this on the agenda today and taking this into consideration. I wanted to express my support for the staff recommendation of approving the TIF tonight. This is an opportunity for you as city commission to show your prioritization of the downtown, which is a huge part of the city, as we know. Not only is it a cultural center, but a higher generator of taxes and a higher generator of economic activity, pedestrian activity, all those goodies that really make Marquette what it is. Thirty years does sound like a long time, but I got to say it's not long enough. It's the maximum amount of time that the public act allows. So it's really all we can do. I liked all the comments about how old I'm going to be when the TIF expires for this district, and I didn't want to tell you guys how old I was going to be in 30 years, but do want to say it doesn't matter because it's not really about me. It's about the success of the downtown. It gives the DDA the opportunity to take some of those big project responsibilities off the plate of the city and enact the plan that has been—it's a public plan, part of the public planning process. Thank you for outlining that, too, Kyle. A year is not enough to make anything in that plan happen, anything at all, maybe some trash pickup, not even 10. So now is the time—I know the word leverage was brought up in the work session quite a bit, and now is the time that we can leverage from other taxing jurisdictions outside of the city and take advantage of those opportunities to invest in our core area of the city of Marquette. TIF is Michigan's premier tool for downtown development. Tax increment revenues are only realized when the value within that district increases, and then those incremental revenues are put back into the district itself. One might attribute increased values to the natural increase over time and inflation, and one might also attribute those to the great work of the DDA. So I encourage you guys today to support the TIF and allow your DDA to continue their amazing work on the best thing about the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Derly-Rust, and I reside at 419 Jackson Street in Marquette. I'm here to express my outstanding support for TIF Plan Number Four. The DDA has already been monetarily supporting Third Street as an essential part of the district for several years, and because Third Street TIF dollars will now be directed to the DDA, this plan promotes fairness for all property owners across the entire district. These TIF funds will enable the DDA to invest in wayfinding, cohesive signage, and navigation throughout the entire district, making us more unified as a downtown. This 30-year extension will also facilitate road, sidewalk, and streetscape improvements and aid in the potential redesign of spotlighted areas like Barriga Avenue, Third Street, and Main Street as identified in the downtown master plan. It will also facilitate improvements to the Marquette Commons, enhancing more public use, and potentially creating a larger area for the Saturday Farmer's Market, which is already at max capacity. It may also assist in possible retail incubators, either in the Commons area or other areas within the district, to encourage new business growth. I know 30 years is a long time, and no one has a crystal ball to project the future, but every year there is a budget review, and every three years there is a maintenance relationship review, and both of those provide opportunities for change, redirection, and co-working between the DDA and the city commission. People are coming to Marquette, and they enjoy all it has to offer, and specifically, they come to downtown. We have seen over 450,000 unique visitors last year, and they're spending money when they come to downtown. In fact, they spent 4% more last year, and that's on top of a 7.5% increase spent from 2021. The downtown entertains 2.8 million visits a year from locals and tourists alike. So it's absolutely necessary that our TIF plan be extended and that Third Street is included in order to continue and facilitate the growth of tourism. We need to keep reinvesting in our downtown, and TIF Plan Number Four does that. With a 25% increase in repeat trips from 2022, and some of the highest visiting days occurring on downtown event days like Blueberry Fest, UP 200, and Fourth of July celebrations, the DDA has continuously proven over and over how successful it is to Marquette's stimulated economy. My family owns a business downtown where I spend the majority of my work week, and I can speak to professional and personal experience that when money is invested outside of our district and outside of the city limits, it directly affects sales, business sustainability, and the livelihood of our 30 employees, and I am not alone. That is just my experience.
Ms. Derly-Rust, I need to stop you. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Geraldine Nalt, 1851 North McClellan Avenue in Marquette. The people from the work session have already heard these comments, but just for the benefit of those that were not at the work session. Marquette's finances are not in a very good spot right now. We do have a balanced budget, but only because of some borrowing that we've done or from one pot to another. Taxes are what support our city, and our city— taxes go up every year, which they showed if we're going to support Marquette and reinvestment in Marquette. I live on a fixed income, and to me, the TIF district says subsidize the DDA, Third Street, Washington Street, Front Street, et cetera. Nobody's subsidizing my income, but I'm going to have to pay whatever taxes Marquette decides are appropriate. And expanding the Third Street and other Marquette areas with the TIF money, I don't think only addresses the residents. A lot of it addresses the tourists, as was just brought up. I think the citizens of Marquette deserve a little priority here because we're here not for five days or 10 days. We're here for the entire year. One of the things brought up was we could recoup the funds at the end of the term, when the term ends. That would be 30 years from now, as I understand it, and I'm not going to be here in 30 years. A lot of people in this room are not. Some will. I am not in favor of the TIF. I think it needs to be looked at and determined what things would do instead of a 30-year TIF and the extension talked about in the plan. The 30-year TIF worries me, along with all the other expenses that are going to— that are going to increase as life goes on because I have not seen many things decrease in my lifetime. Thank you.
Commissioner—sorry, Margaret. Wes Perstener, 521 East Ohio Street, also here on behalf of R. Doc Brewing Company on Spring Street. I was a member of the DDA in the 2018s shortly after the Third Street expansion to the DDA was approved. Had an opportunity to work with a lot of those early board members in helping create the direction of the board and the DDA that would help facilitate the growth of this community. Through that, I have seen that the DDA has worked to craft a culture and atmosphere and a thrill of Marquette. The result has been increased development, more consistent and durable tourism, and vibrant activity. This has been done through application of capital, the facilitation of grant, and the access to resources that are not otherwise provided through the city or other resources at our disposal. Originally, a Third Street became part of the DDA without significant increase in the capture. Regardless, the focus has in part led to a revitalization of the area of Third Street and really Marquette as a whole. While I have not seen prices—towards a point that was just made, while I'm not seeing costs or prices ever go down, I have seen communities die. We have all seen that happen around the UP, and Marquette is no exception to that if we don't focus on the right priorities. However, this lack of additional tax capture, there was an anticipation originally that corrections would be made. Increased tax values or increased values that have been captured need to be reinvested and driven back into the community and into the downtown. From my point of view on Spring Street indirectly, or I would even say directly, some of the efforts have pulled away from value generation opportunities that could have been applied to further benefit my business. However, this isn't acceptable. This lack of equity is acceptable on a short-term, brief basis, but it cannot be allowed to be a permanent situation or operating mechanism. It is now time to adjust and make this a more equitable position that will benefit all of Marquette. Ultimately, a no vote on the TIF plan signals that the Third Street is not considered a part of Marquette or a part of the downtown of Marquette, and if this is the case, the resources then need to be diverted back away to the businesses from whom the taxes are captured and the funding for the DDA is provided. Please vote yes on this.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. My dear friend Jerry Nalt summarized how this appears to residents versus tourists. Every time I read about what the Downtown Development Association has done, it's a reflection of an event—Blueberry Festival, the Farmer's Market, et cetera, et cetera. And I would agree that every dime you give them goes to setting up those events. I have something much more mundane to present to you. When people don't use the money you give them for what it's intended, giving them more money isn't going to help. I have occasion to walk Washington Street, picking up cigarettes and the rest, and I can tell you that in the five years I've been doing that, the Downtown Development Association doesn't seem to have directed the simpleness of picking up litter on Washington Street. For example, after the weekend of the party that we had because there wasn't a UP 200, I was walking Washington Street and tucked away in every nook and cranny and every building was a beverage can, empty, of course. And I appreciate that they do good work, and I'm sure they will do more good work, but as my colleague Jerry Nalt said, it isn't going to be for the residents that the work is done. It's going to be for business owners, and I agree. If I was a business owner, I'd be 100% in favor of scrounging up more money from people on fixed incomes who I don't care about anyway because I price things that they can't attend. With all due respect to your Farmer's Market—I have been there multiple times—and nobody, even somebody who's working as many jobs as I can afford to shop there every week. I'm not kidding you when I tell you that the prices there are not comparable to other places. So I would ask you to think, why would you give more money to people who have demonstrated a lack of ability to clean up one street in the last five years? A lack of ability to address debris, a lack of ability to focus any part of their mission statement. They don't—and I have to be careful how I say this because I'm veering toward the edge of hyperbole. I've never once heard a presentation by the Downtown Development Authority that started with "this is going to benefit the residents of the city of Marquette." Business people, yes. The tourisms, yes. As applied that, I don't think people understand that when I hear something's going to benefit the tourism, it doesn't make my heart go pitter-patter because my income doesn't depend upon the tourists. And therefore, I would strongly recommend that you postpone this decision because as former Commissioner Stonehouse said, two of you are up for reelection this year as it is, and anything that takes money out of my pocket is going to be repeated this fall. Thank you.
Cheryl Feldman, 1630 Center Street—I forgot my address. When I sat down, I asked this lovely young lady next to me, "What brought out all these young people?" I mean, this is great. And she said, "TIF," and I think she said the DDA. Well, many of you young people are not homeowners. You're not paying the kind of money that we're paying. Some of you are, but I didn't count you as a young person.
Ms. Feld, I—
Sorry, I didn't start this.
Speak to us, please.
Anyway, these remarks I made at the last meeting, 30 years is too long. Millages fail because they want five years of collecting millage money. That's too long. 30 years is way too long. I have no problem with expanding it a year or two, but I cannot accept this, and I would push to vote it down. The other thing to piggyback those remarks is I'm really tired of hearing about the tourists. They don't live here day in and day out. They come for five days, or they build a million-dollar home in a township and then they're gone for winter. They're tourists. That's what tourists do. What is being done for we who live here year-round? I don't see a lot. I supported the property tax increase. I have not seen a lot of progress, if any—excuse me—from that decision. So I cannot support this. I'll continue to be as good a citizen as I can possibly be, but I have to draw the line somewhere. When you go to recapture money, you're going to come to us, the citizens. There's no room anymore. There just isn't. We live on a budget. The DDA has to live on one also. You live on a budget. Work with us, and we will work with you, but don't pass this 30-year idea. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. I didn't mean to—
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? We'll need your name and address.
Libby Nelson, I represent the Bodega, 517 North Third Street. I rarely would speak on something I don't know fully about, but what I think is need to be brought in here is the collaboration piece of it. And we employ 34, give or take, hardworking employees and source from nearly 18 local purveyors and farmers inside a 70-mile radius of Marquette. purveyors and farmers inside a 70 miles radius of Marquette. Our support system is not tourists. Our support system is our local residents. If I need something or have had an issue, I have turned to Mike and Tara at the DDA. So, I can speak on that. I would never say to any one of you, "You should or should not do something," because you need to be compelled by your heart and your research. As, as a midlifer, I think, here at 40, and a homeowner in the city of Marquette at one point, and, and someone who does welcome tourism, although I've been one that says, you know, I'm, I'm a downsider, so you can stay below the bridge, or you can stay where you come from, because I do appreciate the life we have. But those people also help create the livelihoods of the people that live here and the people that we employ at the Bodega. So, I just want to say that piece of it, and thank you for all that you do.
Anyone else for public comment?
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Oriana Drive, Marquette, Michigan. Not so much for the commission, but I think for everyone in the audience. Over my experience, the average lifespan of a city manager in a city of Marquette's about five years. If we take five and divide that into 30, that's six city managers with a 30-year TIF. That's how long that stretches out. In other words, right, we've got six years? Okay, we all understand that long time. I would also point out that what the city is really talking about in the TIF, I think, is fairness, the revenue share aspect of the fair TIF to be able to gain some funding source for the city services we provide. We could have the best economic activity in the world going on in the city. We can have thousands of tourists, we can have wonderful events, we can have all the hotels filled, we can have everybody packed in the restaurants. The city of Marquette will not make one nickel from all of those people. We do not collect the local tax on it. The state of Michigan took care of that with Proposition, Proposition A about 30 years ago. So, there is no direct revenue transfer between a tourist visiting the city of Marquette and the corporate city of Marquette as a, as a body. Now, somebody, property values may increase, and that's good, and you eventually may get a sale of that property and unlock it a little bit, and that's good. But if that's within the zone of a TIF, then it's the TIF that does the capture and the increase, not the city of Marquette. So, when we talk again about what we can do, and how we can work with the DDA on this problem, that has to be part of the matrix, to understand that basic information. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Megan Morrison, 440 West Hewitt. I'm just here to express my support of the TIF plan. So, I'm a home, homeowner that lives right off of Third Street with three kids, and I choose to live in Marquette because of the vibrant downtown. I don't have to, I don't have to live here. It's way more expensive than other places I could live in the area, but I love it here, my kids love it here, and that part of it is because of the great events that the downtown has to offer, so just wanted to express my support for the DDA and all the hard work that, that went into putting this plan together.
Anyone else for public comment?
Erica Smith, I live at 1310 West Avenue here in Marquette. I think I bring a little bit of a unique perspective to it. I just closed my business on Washington Street, The Gathered Earth. I own two on Third Street. And I can tell you that Third Street gets neglected, and whenever it comes up, it's like, the finances are not there for us to do the same kind of thing in both places. And both hold and create a wonderfulness of this town. We have, Third Street is where a lot of the Airbnbs are just off of Third Street. When people come to visit, they walk up and down Third Street. We have events that happen there, but they can only happen to a certain extent, because the finances aren't there, which is, when I go to meetings, or we talk about it, they're like, "We only have so much, because we don't have that TIF money to be able to create that event for you, or to have, for you to get the same kind of love that Washington Street gets." So, I've been in both places. I've seen how it works in both spaces. When we talk about visitors versus people who live here, one of the things that raises my hackles a little bit about that is, one of the reasons why I'm pulling out of downtown on Washington Street is because locals don't want to shop there. They are getting to a point where they're saying, "I don't want to be on Washington Street," because of visitors. "I don't want to be there because of the parking," or this or that. So, Third Street is one where, this is, people live off of Third Street. This is where people live, and they work, and students are, and their families come to visit, and they experience Third Street. It is a more local vibe there, but we, you know, Music on Third happens, we can't close down the street, there's, the, the finances aren't there to do that, but it would create such a more vibrant, cool experience for people, and it's a very different scenario. People don't go beyond the hill off of Washington Street. They don't do it. They see that they're, like, "This is the main corridor, this is where things are happening." They don't come up to Third Street. We need to have some way to direct people there. And that's not only visitors, that's locals alike. Local, like, if you look at the, what happened with the last Ladies' Day, a lot of people said, "I didn't go up the hill, because it was up the hill." So, the Third Street businesses don't get that kind of love. There is a visual barrier that happens there. So, if part of the TIF is, we're able to create a scenario where people, it draws people up, I'm all for it. And there's really great, wonderful businesses that are up there, and they want to see good things happen up there, and they're there for it. And to support that, I think, would be valuable. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Janelle Butterey, and I represent Cognition Brewery at 1034 North Third Street. Just want to say I am in support of this TIF dollars, and what we very much work for at Cognition is creating a community space, a local space, a space for our residents here, and we see the tourism as a bonus. And we strive to provide a livable wage and a place for many Marquette residents to be employed and hang out and be together. So, I just want to say real quick, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay, public comment is now closed. Commissioners, we had a work session previous to this, and lots of discussion. I wish that many of you would have been here for the work session, because you would have heard all of the discussion that we had, but at this point, I need a motion before we have any further discussion. Commissioner Ottoe.
Thank you. With all of this, I'd really love to find some middle ground here, so I move to approve the DDA TIF Plan Number Four, however, with the term ending in 2036 to match the existing timeline in the plan created in 2010. Further, I move to waive the developmental, Development Area Citizens Council requirement, and direct the mayor to develop an ad hoc committee containing city commissioners and staff, as well as DDA board members and staff, to develop a revenue sharing plan prior to amending and extending the plan, the current plan until 2054, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
I'm sure our city clerk got all that.
Right down.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Ottoe, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so, first off, thank you all for being here. I want to first speak of to what the DDA does, and how important it is that there is a TIF plan, and the TIF plan needs to be longer than one year, or five years, or even 10, because when you're planning, it, that planning is much more important and, and, you know, comes to fruition after a long period of time than it does a short period of time. So, it, it's pretty commonplace to see these plans last 20 to 30 years, much like our master plan, much like the downtown plan. These things all take time, and the, the, finding the money and the revenue for that takes time. The plan that they've put together is a great one. I think it, it makes a lot of sense, and there are so many things about it that, you know, we should all look to really support and want them to do. Ultimately, there are questions, though, by, by the entire commission, by people in the public, about what extending this 30 years would mean, right? So, and I think that we need to do our diligence as a city commission to answer those questions, and really determine if it makes sense, and how much sense it makes to, you know, calculate a proper dollar when it comes to revenue sharing figure. Ultimately, I just want to make everyone aware, by extending this current plan and allowing them to capture that TIF on, on Third until 2036, just by the calculations off the table, it's approximately $735,000 in additional funding that they will receive until that 2036 timeline. And what that's doing is it's allowing us some time to really negotiate, understand the current plan, and make sure that the city is prepared financially to, to take on a more long-term plan of 30 years, and get the terms right that make sense for all of us. I think that's all I got to say about it.
Commissioner Schlegel.
That's an awful lot. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
I, I think that that's a very reasonable motion, and what I like about it is that, you know, we're not going to be basing our, our future off of something that was a, or set up 30 years ago. It's time to kind of revisit it, see what can be tweaked a little bit, understand what some better practice, or some of the best practices might be going on in other communities throughout the state of Michigan, and, and make sure that, you know, we're driving in the right direction here for the next 30-plus years. I think that, I'm glad you did the calculation there, it's good to see some, some actual numbers and what that will entail. The DDA is incredibly strong and robust in Marquette, and you go to any other community in the UP, and I would bet that you'd be hard-pressed to see a group of people that work as hard as our DDA does, and, and brings as much to the, the downtown area as the DDA does. I really appreciate the thoughts from residents or shop owners up on Third, and the absolute need for the additional funding and where that those areas can be, you know, improved upon, because it's a great conversation. They're a very approachable board, they understand what they're doing very well, and they are here for you guys. And that's, growing up in a, in a family business, I, I totally respect everything, all the comments that were said here today. I don't know, some of the comments earlier about dirty streets and things along those lines, I think it was either Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and I, these guys work on the weekends, too. I was going on, into the Builder Show, and these guys were out sweeping the, sweeping the streets. It's, it's constant, they are always at it, and they're always looking for better ways to, or to beautify Marquette. I hope that they, you know, you don't see a, a big mess out there, but I would be hard-pressed to say that's going to be there for long. So, the work that they're doing is head and shoulders, you know, above and beyond what I've seen in other communities. So, a very realistic motion. I like the fact that we're going to be able to, just again, go back and revisit and make sure that we're heading in the right direction for the next 30. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I actually had a different motion I was going to make, but if, Commissioner Ottoe, could you repeat the motion, please? I, I was trying to get it all in my head, and I was-
I know, that's so long.
I just want to hear, hear what we're debating here, and then I have some thoughts.
Absolutely. I move to approve the DDA TIF Plan Number Four, however, with the term ending in 2036 to match the existing timeline in the plan created in 2010. Further, I move to waive the Developmental Area Citizens Council requirement and direct the mayor, sorry, and direct the mayor to develop an ad hoc committee containing city commissioners and staff, as well as DDA board members and staff, to develop a revenue sharing plan prior to amending and extending the plan until 2054. And I authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Ottoe. For the record, the motion that I was going to make, and I'm not making one, but just to, for comparison's sake, was to approve the plan as recommended with one amendment, to have the DDA staff and city staff work on, in agreement on revenue sharing within the next three months, and bring that back to the commission. I don't know if there's a way to put these things together. I don't, my concern lies more with the ability to set up some kind of mechanism for revenue sharing to appease our budget issues than the timeline. I think putting that 2036 cap on it limits our ability for bonding and projects for the DDA for the future, and I'm concerned about that. So, it's, I'm not a straight yes or a no, I'm just trying to figure out a way to move through this the best way possible. Those are my thoughts for now.
I'm going to let you, yeah, go ahead and-
Thank you.
Respond to that.
No, absolutely good points, and I, actually, my thought process is very similar to yours. I think by, by asking the mayor to put this ad hoc committee together, it almost puts pressure on both of us to get this done as quick as possible, to make sure that it actually comes to fruition, as opposed to extending it now without knowing what the future holds and hoping we get back and, and making the deal. This forces us to, before that plan's extended. That's, so that's my thought process on it.
Yeah, I just don't see the timeline in which it would happen.
We can, we can, hey, we can add that.
All right. Yeah, that's, those are, those are my thoughts for now.
Would you like to amend the motion?
Yeah, I'm not real good about knowing how to do that, I'm going to need some help.
Pro Tim Hanley has a really kind of anxious hand here, wanting to speak.
All right, well, you guys know my thoughts, however, we can get there.
It's kind of in between both of you. I, I like the idea of doing a timeline on this, however, I think that three months is too short for us to adequately look at the stuff that we want to look at in this. There, there was a lot of questions at the work session, things we didn't understand, making sure we wanted to be able to look out further, and I think that by pushing this and giving us a year to come back, have them bring a TIF plan to us, that we can look at, agree upon, and actually know and have a solid thing, so that the commission that is comprised at that point is ready to make a decision that allows for it versus trying to get it done in three months, and then still coming to the same conclusion of not having all of the information, or having a good plan for revenue sharing. Plus, it gives us a lot, it allows us to look at all the different options we could have with them for all of the different things, versus just trying to get through one specific way of doing it. I do like the plan, the fact that we are going forth with automatically starting the Third Street TIF. I think if, in this, in this motion, I think that it is very important that we do that right away. I do like the fact that it is just then tied to this, and then, when we extend, if we do in a year, if they bring it back to us, and we go to 2054, they both have the same timeline at that point. I think it's a good way to do it.
Okay. Other commissioners? Commissioner Larson?
I would just say, if this is the direction that, you know, we're moving, and whether it's three months or a year, I mean, anything, it's pretty clear back to the DDA that the commission is interested in some sort of revenue sharing, and they're certainly going to need time to consider what that, what that means. They already have projects in the kind of planned out to meet those budgets. So, I think erring on the side of a little bit more time to allow them to understand kind of, you know, where they're thinking, where you might be able to kind of trim, or what might not be able to be done, if you, you know, you should carve off 10, 20, 50, 100, whatever, whatever those dollar amounts are over those periods of time, there's going to need to be some time. So, I don't know if three months is long enough, or, you know, or if a year's, if a year is right. So, I don't know if that's something, you know, we want to ask the, the DDA, or if we're allowed to, you know, say what, you know, their, their thoughts are.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yeah, so I just want to remind everyone, too, if we didn't put a timeline on this, if we just simply didn't, then the plan would expire when it was set to in 2036, and all it's costing us is that $735,000. So, I'm assuming the DDA is going to want to get this negotiated prior to that term expending, or, you know, being ending. So, that's kind of why I didn't put a timeline on it, because ultimately, the timeline's 2036, if, if it weren't to ever come to fruition. And it's not costing us anything other than making sure that Third Street is, is properly funded.
Pro Tim Hanley.
A question for Jeremy, actually. What would the part of the commission, like, what's the, what would the committee be doing, the ad hoc committee specifically, like, just going over revenue sharing? Or going over everything? Like, what's the exact purpose? What's the actions for them?
I think, it's not our position to create a TIF plan, that's theirs. They've created the TIF plan, they've created it beautifully, and it's not, also, it's not really on us to come up with changing how that plan looks as far as what they're, what they're hoping to accomplish with those funds, and also, ultimately, how long it takes, you know, for that plan to come to fruition. I think this is just a nego- I think this is just a negotiating piece to ensure that the city is protected in the future financially and really it gives us the time to sit down and look at that with our staff, with their staff, with everyone we can involved to do so.
City manager has something to say.
I am looking for a little bit more direction on that if we are to go forward with a committee, only because if this is within a year or I think that the timing, I think three months is really aggressive. I do think that looking at this budget cycle will help city staff go ahead and look at the impact and judge and determine that impact and come back to the commission, but I have some concerns just to have a large committee like that with the timing of everything and the fact that this is going to require quite a bit of budget and also we, if we're waiting a year, we have changeover in perhaps commission in like, I would say, seven months. So, I feel like it's going to be a little bit difficult and challenging to coordinate that. So, if there's anything to kind of look at, that would be one where we're requesting some more direction.
Sure. So, from a budget standpoint, I mean, ultimately, year one, it's costing us, what, $9,000 to make sure that this happens today? If we look at, you know, the plan. Ultimately, I think realistically, if all parties are involved, I think we could probably make everyone happy with, between that three months to a year and just factor out at six months and really try to nail this plan down. And I think if we get the, all parties involved, I think it's, it's completely possible. It kind of keeps them on their plan of 2054. In Michael's defense, and I do agree with him, I think it's, it's a lot to hash out. I mean, it's really a lot to fully understand and get those figures, but I do think that ultimately if we weren't able to come to any agreement in six months, the plan is still in place till 2036, like I'm saying. So, this is giving them surety now to do what they need to do, but it's also giving us surety as well.
We will need to have a short-term end date for that committee as it cannot be a standing committee. It has to have a defined period of time, just so that we can get that hashed out.
Is that something that can get taken care of at the next commission meeting as I assign the committee? Or as I assigned the commissions? Okay. So we'll keep that in mind. Commissioner Smith.
I guess I'm actually quite uncomfortable with commissioners and DDA board members being on that committee. All negotiations in my history here have been done by staff and come back to the commission for approval. So personally, I would rather see it continue in that way and maybe our city attorney would like to weigh in on that.
Yes, please, city attorney.
Yeah, I will admit that made me a tad uncomfortable as well. I think having an ad hoc committee that is working, for example, with staff on our end makes sense, but when you start combining staff with commissioners, with people from another agency on that committee trying to negotiate something between the two of them, that does cause me a bit of concern.
So your recommendation would be for commissioners to work with city staff and for the DDA to work over there and that somehow those negotiations come together?
Basically, so the ad hoc committee works with city commissioner, or city staff and directs that staff, the commission as a whole obviously directs the staff to then negotiate that, but maybe that ad hoc committee is assisting with kind of what that might look like, for example, similar to the ad hoc committee that negotiated city manager's contract or, you know, something along those lines.
Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, and sorry to take up so much time, but I guess I would prefer that we not have an ad hoc committee and that we just direct staff to work with the DDA and bring it back to the full commission and skip that step entirely. That's my preference. Timeline, I'm comfortable with whatever city staff would be comfortable with, three months, six months, a year, I think we should defer to them. Those are my thoughts.
I mean, I can respond to that. And ultimately, my response to this is, doesn't really matter who's on the committee, I think it's fine if city staff does it, and the reason is, is because ultimately there is a timeline here and that's 2036. And I know that all parties want to get this extended, I know I certainly do because I like to plan in the future. I want to see these big things come to fruition, I really do. And ultimately, I think there is, there's happiness here for all of us. If it's just city staff, myself, I'm appeased by that because ultimately we're going to need to approve it and it's costing us 700 grand, so that's it.
Other commissioners? We have a motion on the floor and it sounds like you might be tempted to change it.
I can, I'm willing and wanting to change it at this point.
So, so because there's a motion on the floor, either someone has to make a motion to amend that or you need to withdraw it and make a new motion.
Just motion to amend it the way you said.
Thanks, Commissioner Ottoe. I move that we amend Commissioner Ottoe's motion to direct city staff to work with DDA staff to negotiate revenue sharing and I don't think we've determined the number of months.
None needed, none needed.
None needed, I don't think so.
Full stop. That's my amendment.
Comments?
You need a second, you need a second.
What?
Second.
Okay, second, okay. So, we, any comments on the amendment to the motion?
No, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment to the motion? Please say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Now, we have a motion that, would you care to read it with the amendment?
You know what, I think I can. I move to approve the DDA TIF Plan Number Four, however, with the term ending in 2036 to match the existing timeline in the plan created in 2010. Further, I move to waive the Development Area Citizens Council requirement and direct the mayor, sorry, yeah, direct the mayor to allow city staff, sorry, direct city staff and DDA staff to bring back a plan to the commission to, yeah, to amend and extend the plan until 2054.
That is how the motion reads now.
Is that fun?
Does that work, city clerk?
I didn't hear revenue sharing in there.
Well, then you also need to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the modified plan that you've proposed. The very bottom, authorize the city clerk.
Would you like me to read this again? Because I can do it. Hold on.
Yeah. Just, I would say just note that you're directing city staff and not DDA staff, so direct city staff to work with DDA staff.
Good call, yes. Directing city staff to work with DDA staff. This is a lot.
It, it might be helpful since the clerk is taking notes to see if he may be able to read it back.
Thank you.
Sorry, clerk.
This is a fun, I like, this is when I get to come in. All right, so I don't, this probably isn't going to help. I wrote, the, as amended motion is to approve the Downtown Development Authority TIF Plan Number Four with a term ending in 2036, which would match the existing timeline of the plan approved in 2010, and to further waive the Development Area Citizens Council requirement and direct city staff to work with DDA staff and to bring back a plan to the city commission to amend and extend the existing plan to 2054. You did not mention revenue sharing in your previous, you do want to talk about revenue sharing?
Well, options, options.
Huh?
If any options.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think that that's, that's fine because we know what the plan is. I mean, this, to me, that's fine.
And to direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
Because ultimately, if I may, the city staff may read this and say, hey, we're going to be fine in 30 years. Okay, great.
Yep, city clerk took care of that.
Yep.
All right.
Just one point, I'm sorry, Kyle. I think I might need you to read back that because it sounded like you were, we were being directed to bring back revenue sharing as part of the TIF plan and I just need to make the distinction that revenue sharing would be a side agreement with the DDA paired with it, it would not be incorporated into that exact TIF plan. So I just want to make sure we're being very careful about what we're directing staff to bring back to the commission and we're being very clear about that.
So, revenue sharing's not in the language, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
But, so the language does just say to bring back a plan to the commission to amend and extend the TIF plan to 2054. So, I don't know if we need a second portion, if the revenue sharing would be separate from the TIF plan extension.
No, because I think...
I think that's to Sean's point.
Yeah. Exactly. I think that's fine.
Suzanne, think it's fine? So I would interpret that to mean that the plan to extend would include any other options that the parties feel are appropriate to satisfy your concerns and make the DDA still viable.
100%.
Okay. Commissioners, comments? We could be here for another half hour discussing the language. For, thank you, for those of you who are in the audience, I just wanted to give a little bit of background about why this was so tough for us. Particularly those that you have businesses on Third Street and are just showing up and were not privy to our work session. And just for the record, I was a business, I was a business owner on Third Street for 19 years. This is not about extending the TIF to Third Street because I think every commissioner wants to do that. And we recognize how important the DDA is, how vibrant that they have made our downtown and the value of the DDA. We here as commissioners exist because of local government and local government exists for the health and safety of the citizens. That means basic services like fire and police and good drinking water and are we doing our storm water and do we have wastewater and do we, can we plow the roads, those kinds of things? That's what we're concerned about. Our other responsibility is to be fiscally responsible and our budget has been very, very tight these last several years and our administration's been making a lot of headway on that, but we're still in dire straits with our finances. So, right now, the way the TIF reads is that the base year is 1992. So the city only gets the tax revenues from the base of 1992. What?
For Washington.
For, well, for the, the current DDA and TIF district. So there's a big difference between 1992 and 2036. A lot happens, there's a lot, the base of the TIF, TIF district is $10 million and that's what the city gets their taxes on. The value is 50 million. So, so the DDA has been able to capture, correct me if I'm wrong, city staff, the taxes from that $40 million difference. So that's why you're hearing so much about revenue sharing. And the, the spirit of the TIF plans is to have that TIF plan do the things that the DDA is saying that they want to do and then for the taxing jurisdictions, like the city, the county, the Ironor Heritage Trail, the library, to be able to benefit from that increase in value. So every time we extend a TIF, another more, several years, like the first one was supposed to end in, what, the 20, well, the first one was supposed to end in 84.
Start in 84.
Yeah, start in 84. The second one was supposed to end in 2011, but 2013, but instead, 2011, we extended it, so we didn't get that, that we needed. So then it got extended to...
2036.
36, so, okay, so in 2036, we should be able to, the city should be able to and the taxing entity should be able to benefit from that increase in value. But the TIF Plan Number Four is asking to extend it even further. So we were looking at 62 years difference when the basis and the actual TIF plan ends. So, so it's about, are we able to share that, that value with the city versus just in capturing? And you've heard some comments about how that doesn't do anything for the residents. So, I really appreciated a couple of the residents' comments because I gave this a great deal of thought last night that we here as commissioners, we hear all the time, the city has just turned to tourists. We hear it on the streets, we see it in the social media, we heard it in all of the public input for the master plan, that we don't want to just be a tourist place, we want Marquette to be for the residents, those of us who pay taxes. And at this point, we can't, we can't fix the roads. We rely on the goodwill of citizens to fund a major playground down at the Lower Harbor Park. We require entrepreneurship and donations to fund a city band shill for the city band at the city park because we don't have money. How many years have we had a dog park at the top of the list for the recreation plan? But we can't do that, we can't fix the roads. So, that's part of our responsibility is to assure that we are fiscally responsible. So, you know, as I consider my responsibilities as a commissioner, I am really glad that we've had the work session before this, I'm really glad that we have listened to this. I am glad that this was a struggle for the commissioners because I really feel that we have to tip that, those scales, not all the way, but back to some sort of a balance that will work for the DDA, for Third Street, for everyone, and also for those people who are doing the heavy lifting. If you live outside, if you live outside of the TIF district, you are supporting all of the basic services of the city. And I think we can, I'm really confident that we could find a good resolution to that. And that must be my speech tonight. Wow, more than I thought it was going to, I think, is it time to call a vote? This is a roll call vote, do we need to have it read again?
I don't think we have a second on the motion. Who seconded it?
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, I just missed it. Just making sure.
Unless there's any last comments, I would ask the city clerk to do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hanley.
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, the motion carries six to zero. And that was very exciting. Okay, let's move on on our agenda to the consent agenda. Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion. What, you're all leaving? Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Commissioner Larson, could we just keep the volume down a little bit so we can conduct our business? Commissioner Larson.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? Any discussion on this end? Okay, all in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion, could you please keep the volume down so that we can conduct business? Could you please keep the volume down so we can conduct business? Thank you. All in favor, say yes. Did I already say that? No, okay. Motion passes six to zero. Under new business, we are looking at the purchase agreement extension for 600 West Spring Street. City clerk, could I have the background, please?
Thank you, mayor. The city issued a request for proposals on July 19th, 2022, based upon city commission direction to seek missing middle housing at a higher density for the vacant city-owned parcel 0240012 located at 600 West Spring Street. The city received one proposal from Marquette County Habitat for Humanity in response to the RFP. The proposal was subsequently amended following in-depth conversation about developing the site and the final proposal was for eight single-family homes for households between 30 and 60% of the poverty threshold in Marquette County that meet the Marquette County Habitat for Humanity requirements. The city commission approved a resolution of intent to sell this property at their December 12th, 2022 regular meeting. Following this meeting, the city manager opened negotiations with Habitat and approved a right-of-entry permit to allow access to the property to conduct an environmental review. Upon completion of this review, with minimal findings and an appraisal, the city manager has negotiated a purchase price of $123,200, 80% of the appraised value. Following approval of the sale, Habitat started their due diligence in seeking the appropriate zoning approvals for their intended development. Due to the complexity of their proposal, they've requested a 60-day extension to the purchase agreement. Staff supports this extension. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $123,200 in revenue from the sale of the property. Recommendation, approve the addendum to the purchase agreement with Habitat for Humanity and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, who have a motion? Commissioner Hanley. Oh, I'm sorry, Pro Tim Hanley.
Yeah, close enough. I move that we approve the addendum to the purchase agreement with Habitat for Humanity and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
And a second? Commissioner Larson.
Second that.
And conversation, no, discussion?
I, I think it makes sense, it's a matter of business to, you know, move it forward and it's the right thing to do.
Further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Wow, we're back to public comment, I believe. Yep. Anyone wishing to provide public comment, please step up to the podium, you have three minutes, please state your name and address.
Margaret Brom, 404 East Magnetic Street. Unaccustomed as I am to public speaking...
Unaccustomed, as I am, to public speaking, in the last public comment statement, I made a very simple factual statement that I did not believe the DDA was doing a comprehensive job of cleaning up Marquette's streets. I didn't make that statement to slander anyone, I didn't make that statement out of malice. I simply made that statement, uh, last week, walking between Fourth and Washington and the post office, I filled a pooper bag full of garbage that was readily visible to other people, and there is no garbage can on that block. And there hasn't been one for the last five years, since I've been fussing about this. But, I was challenged, and that's your right to challenge me on that statement. I will therefore, in the future, be very, very diligent in sharing what I find on those streets that are controlled by the DDA. I'm not, I'm not saying this is a threat, I'm just saying that whenever I walk those streets, I'll be happy to share with the commission, and they can decide whether to share with you or not, what's left for everyone, not just residents, but for tourists to see. I mean, I don't, I don't bring garbage with me to put in a certain spot, it's always there. And I don't have to worry about the season, or what's on the, what's going on, it's always going to be there. And this is one of the concerns that I diligently have had in walking the streets. I have seen absolutely no improvement in any of that since the last seven years. And I appreciate that street cleanup is not the major thrust of this, but the people tasked with that area, that is part of what they're supposed to be doing. And this is one of the things that, again, I will be diligent in sharing with you, what I find, where I find it, because that's part of my job, is to make sure you see what I see. And it's easier, I had the city, I had the city manager out, I, I hope she lasts, by the way, a lot longer than five years, but I had her out with a grabber stick for one block of Third Street, and she was amazed at what we picked up, including one business owner who came out and said, oh, you're not going to find any cigarette butts here, because we're this type of business, and we were pulling them out on the mats as fast as we could. And, uh, she's very competitive, she got more than I did that day. But it's, it's, a lot of money is being invested in this city to try to make it a better city. People who have money invested in them have an obligation to show to the people who give them the money that it's being spent well, and for the betterment of all the people involved. And so I'll be, as I said, be diligent in my sharing, and you will see what I see. And it's not, again, you don't have to look that hard. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Patricia Sally, I live at 747 West Bluff Street. I also wanted to make a comment about the DDA, a positive one. I work at one of the businesses downtown, I'm down there Monday through Friday. I do not see a lot of litter or trash outside our building, in the front or the back. And every day in the winter, when it snows, we can open our door to our clients and our customers at 8 o'clock in the morning, because of the snow removal. I think a lot of people forget what the DDA's purpose is in the things that they do for us every day as business owners. And, and also to remember, uh, businesses that are in the downtown and up Third Street area are one of the, collectively, one of the largest employers in the state, in the city of Marquette. So, again, that's what I wanted to comment on, is how happy we are, how pleased we are, that no matter how much snow there is, that we can always get in and out of our building, along with our clients. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. And we will move on to comments from the commission. And Commissioner Otway, we haven't heard enough from you, I'm going to begin with you.
No comment, Commissioner Smith?
Pro Tim Hanley?
Um, I don't have much, I think it was a really good work session and good meeting, but I would like to ask the city manager in her comments if she could touch on the information we received today about the Dow Chemical site, if that was possible? Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to compliment the commission on the work that they did tonight with this. I thought it was very engaging and well-thought-out, deeply-thought-out. And city staff has been really busting their hump to get us to where we are today. Thank you for that, and I look forward to doing more of this in the future. But, I, I think, overall, where we're headed with this, uh, long-term, is the right direction for Marquette. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I was just reflecting, kind of in the middle of the debate, that, um, in January of 2022, this is the last time the, the TIF, the Third Street TIF was in front of us, we didn't approve it. Two years later, when this first kind of came back up, maybe January of this year, um, I thought, okay, yeah, here we go, we're ready. But, um, there's just a lot to unpack. And I, I think we all wish we were in a better financial situation than we are, so we could just blanket approve it, move on. But, um, I feel like today, we did a lot of, like, deep soul-searching up here in front of the public, to be able to come to a compromise that I think will work for everyone. Everyone's probably not going to be the happiest, but I'm, I'm happy that we're able to move forward and not kick it down the can for another two years. So, I'm hopeful that, um, we'll see something great out of this, and I look forward to seeing the improvements on Third Street and in the downtown, as I know Tara and her team will make that happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Uh, I just want to address one of the comments that was made earlier, they might not be here now, but, hey, not interested in trying to, you know, push this plan through. So this is, this is process. The DDA has been on top of, has been on top of it, they developed a plan, it's been out there for public comment uh, for, for, for months, and how long, I don't know how long it's been in
Years.
Process, years, and working on it. So it's part of, it's part of the process of government. So it's, it's been out there, uh, it's not being pushed through. And so then what we see here with the work, with the work plan, is just us getting through it and trying to come to some of those, some of those decisions. And, you know, maybe it's a learning point, where we should have had a work session, you know, a little bit earlier on in it, but ultimately, it's process, and I think we're going to get to the end of something. So, you know, to the DDA, you know, they're not rushing anything through, it's, you know, coming through to this process now. Uh, but, you know, they've, they've done their homework, and this is us just, you know, checking, checking the math and trying to get a temperature gauge on where, where we should, where we should be and how, how it works. So, whether it's vastly different or minutely different, you know, you know, coming forward, I think, I think it's an important thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. This was a very, kind of difficult, but also a very rewarding session. This topic has consumed me for the last week, and I have learned a great deal, and I know that there's a whole lot more to learn. And I think even our city staff and DDA has learned a few things, now, after all of our conversations. There's one person who has done more work than me, and that's Commissioner Otway, and I just want to say thank you. He's, he's, um, headed the DDA for several years, he knows the DDA, he knows TIF, and his experience and knowledge has been very valuable throughout this process. So thank you, Commissioner Otway. Um, I also want to just recognize that four years ago, on March 11th, 2020, is when COVID was declared, excuse me, the pandemic that it was. And if, it's good, you know, um, Margaret Brom just talked about the 13th is when our city closed down, but it was March 11th when the pandemic was called. So that's today, that's four years today, and it's always good to think back to what was that like? And we're still not out of recovered, totally recovered from it, but we've come a long way. So, that's, it's good, it's just a good little history thing to note, to recognize. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. Uh, I, I really would like to just touch on the TIF topic for a moment, if you don't mind, just to, just to really express some appreciation for the conversation that's had tonight. Um, we brought this back before the commission, you know, in 2022, originally, and obviously, it was years before that, but there was significant progress made tonight. Um, and I think that really, when we, when we request questions from the commission leading up to the, the meeting day, there's a lot of questions that are asked, but then there's these, this moment where we all just say, we don't know what to ask, or we don't know even what we need to ask. And by having the conversation here in the work session, and then also during the public, or during the, following the public hearing, it really gets us to the point of what we really are concerned about. So, um, I really appreciate the progress made tonight. Uh, it's really important to note that we have now extended the TIF onto Third Street, or we would be extending that TIF, saying that there's support for that, but then also really prioritizing that, um, that vision for both the city and the DDA going forward. So, um, I'm really happy with, with how we progressed tonight, so I appreciate all of that direction. So thank you. And I, I'm just really impressed with the commission that, um, does their homework. Uh, it is, it is really, um, really a great challenge, and it's also a really, a great breath of fresh air, um, when working with elected officials. So thank you for that. To, um, and also, I just want to really commend, um, DDA staff, but then also city staff, who spend a significant amount of time, especially Assistant City Manager, Sean Havens, um, our, our treasurer, Tara Barum, and our CFO, Mary Schlitz, and really appreciate all of that assistance. We were scrambling, and our successor as well, scrambling on, on some last-minute questions, but, um, we were able to get some, some real good information out there. So, thank you to city staff on that. Now, to get to, um, what, uh, the, um, the question of, I think, today as well, um, that Commissioner, or that Mayor Pro Tim Hanley had asked, was an update regarding the Cliff's Dow site and the negotiations with the state of Michigan. And there has been some, um, negotiations that have occurred, um, over the past year, or even almost, almost two years even. Um, but really, in this last week, we've, um, we were under the impression we're making some significant progress, but have heard that those negotiations are going to end here with, with no, um, no future veterans home on the Cliff's Dow site at this point. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things on this, that we really appreciate the, the assistance and the patience and the time that the state has taken on exploring all options within that, within that site. But there were some, some big points that we were concerned with and needed some, um, compromise and negotiations on, and that really is involved finding a mutual agreeable solution to protect the city from any, any third-party liability in the future, as well as defining the responsibility for things such as the contaminated material found on the site, and who would be responsible for that. This really was our only opportunity to advocate for protection regarding liability concerns, and we, we really had made some significant progress, but we also respect the fact that the, the state has a very tight timeline that they needed to work on. And in order to keep that funding from the federal and from the state side, it was important that they made a decision. And so today, uh, they had notified us that they are not going to be proceeding with any further negotiations on that site. We support the state, I certainly, um, support that, and, and we will, um, be answering any questions that, that anybody has at a later time, but we just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Um, so, that's, um, that's all I have, I'm sure that there will be further PSAs or things shared. So, did that answer your question on, on that? Thank you. And that has been shared, um, with some people that were, um, attending those, those public comments or in those public forums, and then also, um, some other groups as well. So, that's all, that's all.
So that concludes, excuse me, that concludes our City Commission meeting at 7:19 PM.